No, yeah.
Right at the beginning of the recording. You have to do some orifices.
So Jason Orifices, I know, I know. We all, um, we're starting on number nine.
Recording in progress.
Um, if we could.
Nine through fourteen is the top for tonight.
Okay, rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have just one statement that I have to read before we get into our business. The Board of Selectmen is holding these budget workshops to discuss budgets only with our department heads. While these meetings are open to the public, they are workshop meetings and not intended to solicit public comment. The Board may, at their discretion, accept some public comment, but they are not required to do so. The public may make public comments on the budget at the public hearing, which will be held in January after the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee have reviewed the budgets. Okay, land use.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. If you want to give us a little, yeah, a little whatever, and then we'll.
Kind of a general, since I have the next two on the holly docket as well.
All right, okay. So you're going to give us a, um, an overview of land use building?
And conservation.
And conservation.
I have all three.
Okay.
Kind of a general, just informational statement, um, as I'm recite, will appreciate. I'm very conservative in doing the budgets, um, all three. It has, I mean, most of mine are, on any three, are salary and those kind of things that are normally just dictated. We don't, you know, there's not a whole lot. But as I said, try to be very conservative with everything, um, using free resources, low-cost resources whenever possible. And I'll start off with land use. I don't know if you want to go line by line, or?
Well, we'll do a section, if that's okay.
But, so.
All right, why don't we do zero one four one nine one one oh one to, let's do zero one four one nine one one seven six, which is basically.
Oh, salary and.
Oh, salary, that's correct.
That includes myself, I'm full-time, I have thirty-nine hours to the planning department, or land use department, and one hour comes out back to the conservation commission budget. And forgive me because I can't see you, but I'm taking a bit of a sardarine. It also encompasses my land use administrative assistant, who is my kind of direct go-to for my planning and zoning board type applications. My land use technician, who is thirty-six hours from the land use department and four hours from the conservation budget. He is, again, he is kind of my second and does all the, does all of the conservation commission work and access their liaison, but he's also my backup. For some reason I'm not here, he is my back, he is my second. I also have a full-time land use course, who is my frontline, everybody coming in, that's who they see first. Again, he is full-time, forty hours a week. And then we have, this year, because he can't, we had a bit of a break in between, so there's, you know, looking at it next year, that's a full forty hours, full-time position. But it also includes, we just have a small amount for overtime. I generally encourage my staff to either, if, for example, if they have a few minutes that they've worked late one day or had to come in early to compensate during the week, so that it kind of balances out. But there is an occasional small amount of time that may, that may incur some overtime pay. But again, I've kept that extremely conservative and again encouraged them to either adjust their time later in the week or use some comp time when available. And then again, land use, the vacation buyback, it is a small amount, I do encourage my staff to take their vacation. Unfortunately, you know, sometimes to do when they came on board, it's just a timeline, timing issue, that it's just not possible, so there is some money in there for, for buyback, and they're allowed to request one week buyback.
Okay.
And that's for staff, so.
Okay.
That's pretty much it in a nutshell for those line items, if you had any questions.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions, all right. We won't take a motion on that, we'll just move on, okay? So let's do zero one four one nine one two one zero, um, all the way to the end, zero one four one nine one five oh seven.
Kind of going through those, land use telephone is simply my cell phone that I have, keeps me in contact at all times. So that, that's just by contract. The land use postage, we did, again, try to be very conservative in tracking across, your apologizations, very small. I did reduce that again by two thousand dollars.
But you're doing a lot of by, um.
A lot by email whenever possible. We encourage with the packets for the boards, if they're in the area to pick them up, or I, there's a few of the members that are literally on my way home, I will drop off packets to help save postage because they are quite costly. The land use computer is, things like Esri and some of our other software that we use on a regular basis, those are contractual obligations. Land use printing, we do print the minute books, they have to be bound by a company in Massachusetts, archival paper. And that's, the cost last year, I believe, was just under a thousand, and we know they were talking some minor increases, but a thousand dollars should, should more than cover the cost of printing those books. And then moving through, our land use notices and advertising are the, the advertising that were bound, the notices of the planning board and zoning board meetings, that we are required by law to post. Those costs have gone up, but again, we try to be very concise in our descriptions because as you know, all those legal notices are by word count and by size, so we try to be as concise as possible, but get the information across.
So it would seem that the seven hundred dollars coming back is the money that you charge the fees?
Yes, the, the.
Right, the seven hundred dollars, which is in red, so if you have someone someday. You charge them for that mailing, so that, that seven hundred dollars does come back.
That's actually the reduction, that's the advertising cost, the mailings would be out of postage, we don't, because the advertisements are the legal.
Where do the fees for the subdivision come back in, is a positive?
Those, I believe, go into the general fund, the revenue.
So they don't show against the department, they show.
Which happens, which is.
I don't like that accounting, I'm going to tell you that right now. That should show as a positive to offset that department.
When I get to the revenue section, I can tell you what those fees are.
But we're looking at their, their intake and their expenses right now, and I think it should show here as well as there. And so if it's a duplication or publication, that's okay, but I would think it would show here that, yes, we mail these things out and we charge people for them, and when that money comes back in, that should show on this department sheet here as a department positive, because the money's coming back in for this department, isn't, a general, it doesn't go against the trucks and the utility bin, it goes into this department, it should be, and I realize that happens in your numbers.
It just goes to the general fund, it does go back.
I, I understand the general fund quite well, but I'm just saying, I think it still should show here and show as a positive in both. I think it should show on behalf of that department, that these monies are coming back in to that department, whether it shows on both and you duplicate it and you go back in and say, well, it's coming back. And, and the general fund say, well, we pulled another general fund and give the people the credit that they're entitled to.
So then what you're saying is, let's just take the town clerk, for instance, they take in lots.
Yeah, all of it.
All of it, and it comes into the general fund, I assume?
Yeah.
So what you're saying is, instead of showing it, showing it.
Is a negative, because all you show the town clerk is the expenses that go out. You don't see any money coming in, without the town clerk, we don't take in any money. No town clerk, no money coming in.
I mean, as a whole, the auditors do want to see revenue placed in the revenue line, they really, they really.
I would think that would be very important on these sheets to show that the department, people say, what's a town clerk really do? They stand there all day and they take our license and registration, our tax dollars, well, that's, every dollar goes through that same, is the money that the planning board and, and this department generates. It should show maybe the same number twice on the sheets, and we're going to be smart enough to realize that, so you put a note in, it's going to show twice, but it should show to that department what money it brings in. And the town clerk, yeah, they didn't, yeah, they set the tax bills, they go to the elections, they handle it, so show the positive of the money that's coming in collected by them, so you say, well, why do we pay a tax collector? It's just like, she's collecting the money, they come in and they buy, get a building permit. I think that's a, you know, balancing, I'm not asking you to double the money, I'm just saying, it should be a credit against and say, well, this is so mentioned in the general report of how much the total is, because they do take the money in and they work for that money.
I appreciate that, you recognize that we reflect that.
Yeah, just reflect the money you're taking in.
I suppose that there could be a note, because you could put something maybe on the bottom of these sheets.
You don't have to, if you're doing, if you're billing by department, this is cash that's coming into that department.
And the, so we do report, when we get, when we get to the revenue section, we discuss what's coming in for motor vehicles, what's coming in for building permits, what's coming in for the fees, what money is in the building.
But that, if that shows here, if someone's watching us tonight and they're going to say, well, how much money did you bring in for these building permits?
I would say, stay tuned until the end of the session and we hit revenues and we'll tell you that.
Yeah, well, then we got it, we got it, but if you've already got it, you show it, this is what this department brought in.
Revenues are an estimate and they're ongoing, so.
Right, I was just going to say, the problem is, it's going to have to be an estimate, because we don't know, I mean, we don't know how many, how much more are you going to take in.
I was going to say, the only difference is the way we do it at the county is we do revenues and expenses for each department at the same time, so that might be something for the future that we could do.
Yeah, I just, so the public knows, they're just issuing these things, you're bringing money in. I mean, in town clerk.
The cost is offset by the fees that we pay.
I'm, I'm not associated well with town clerks, but I do know that, that was the one thing, they don't realize how much money the town clerk brings in, and, and what they do, without the town clerk, there's no money coming in because there's nobody there collecting. Now, is it all their money? It's not their money, it's licensing and everything else they do, but the people that we pay, that's where. And same with you, you pay and you, you have a fee for.
For, or acquisition and any money.
That's right, and it should show, that's all I'm saying, is it should show that you do take money and you're not giving this stuff away.
Understood.
Okay, um, legal and professional.
Yeah, legal, uh, legal and professional, we do, we do have a pretty substantial deduction on that line item. Some of that comes from the fact that, um, I have been really utilizing an HNA, um, my own resources and my own experience, and we've also been fortunate to have, you know, kind of, we haven't had any big surprises, let's put it that way.
Yep.
But you have some there for when we do need it for certain, for certain issues.
Yep.
Um, but again, I'm sorry.
Sorry, also that was increased in twenty-three because the prior town planner was going on leave, so we have put extra money in that budget to hire a consultant to basically fill in for her maternity leave, so.
Got it.
Now that that is not needed.
Yes, it is definitely not needed. So that's a combination to, brought that down substantially. The land, the Lakes Region Planning Commission dues are set by Lakes Region Planning Commission. It's a fee based on the, the number of, the population of the town, and next year it is going to be seven thousand one hundred ten, which is an increase, but again, we, we do have staff that acts as liaisons and they, we do plan to use them as a, as a resource. Moving through, land use publications, that's basically our law books, the RSA books that we purchase every year, and then there occasionally, we do have some hard copy documents that we do need to purchase. Training and mileage, again, are dues for things like New Hampshire Municipal, the Business and Economic Affairs, our standard, the ones that we are, have been using as resources to offset some of the other fees, and also for participation in any of the seminars and trainings, ongoing trainings, and then the mileage to, to travel back and forth. Land use equipment, we've kept a small amount in there, we do have some things covered under, with our IT contracts, but things such as, we've had battery backups that have reached their, their maximum use, things like that. Keyboards, my, just some, some small items that occasionally just sheer wear and tear.
Sure.
Would require a replacement.
Obviously, the next, um, four.
Yes.
Um, we have Medicare insurance, insurance, dental insurance, retirement, um, those figures are there. We don't have, those could fluctuate.
Yeah.
And change, because we don't have the insurance rates yet, okay, all right, then plot, plan, print.
Yeah, the, that, yeah, that is our infamous plotter.
Yep.
As we, we adore, we call her Myrtle. She is no longer under contract, but is used a lot. The supplies for her are a little bit costly, but it is, she's well worth having, and we do, um, looking at our supplies for that particular, the large rolls of paper, maintenance kits, things like that, although this is still much more cost-effective than maintaining a service contract.
And, and she's going to hold up? I know, yeah, I know, they can be very.
Cartridge looks fabulous.
They can be very temperamental.
Yes, she's, we've had a few minor software glitches, but that's more of a network connection type issue, not a hard, and now that I'm saying this, I'll probably go in tomorrow and.
Okay.
She's being very good.
All right.
Again, moving into land use office supplies, just general supplies, you know, pens, paper, that type of thing that we just use on a day-to-day basis. We do always shop around, we're, we're very conscientious of that, and do things even, as Mr. Pike might notice, we, just for our planning board packets, recently purchased some vinyl envelopes, so we don't have to keep purchasing the paper ones which just wear out over time, so we do try to be very conscientious. And then the master plan information, right now, we've put a small amount, five hundred dollars in there. As many of you know, the master plan is extraordinarily updated. I do have Rod on a mission, he has, he's actually going to see the Director of Lakes Region Planning Commission tomorrow at an executive committee meeting. He has reached out to her to see, of, cost-wise and timeline-wise, and what they can offer us to, to just do a, an overview and an overhaul of that master plan, because it is a critical document. But this would just be a small amount, to at least kind of start that process and, and see, we need to see what we have and where we need to go to further.
Yep, bring it up to date.
Yep, and then last one, there's the land use tax maps, map updates, that's the quarterly maintenance, and then the property changes. We base this roughly on last year's numbers, just kind of rounding up a little to give us, because they're looking at twenty dollars per building. Currently, we had a hundred and forty-three, we're estimating a hundred and seventy-five from kind of how we're trending, and that's just for the pickups per building, and then of course the quarterly maintenance and the, the charge. And that's pretty much my budget in a nutshell.
To answer your next question, for the revenues, so we have three buckets that we report to the state, the revenues for building licenses, building permits, other licenses. So for those, the land use department, without segregating each one, they have collected year-to-date about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
That's what I'm saying, the, if the public's looking at this, that, I know you probably can't show it on the sheet, but they do take in money because they issue these permits and they should be credited back to that department.
And then the building department itself has collected fifty-seven thousand.
I have a question on the line oh one four ninety-one dash three oh two and oh one four one nine one dash five oh five.
Yes. The land use equipment and the office supplies?
Yes, I think one embodies the same, I think the office supplies goes along with the equipment.
Um, the office supplies is more like physical office of paper and pens versus just computer.
And maintenance, and maintenance to if you bought a machine, where does that go? If you bought a machine and it had, you, you bought a printer and you had to buy ink for it, where does that show? Does that supplies?
Typically, that's a soft, like it's a consumable, so it is taken out of office supplies, the more hardware.
I'll go back to the first one then.
Yep. The first one would be the hardware.
What you inherited when you came here. And thank God you did, and thank God you did, is we seem to have, to have these, uh, tracking devices, these scanners, these things that could look up at the sky and tell you who's doing what. You could program them in and look at the lot, and you pick out what's going on in the lot, and you could tell us. I think they're called drones. And the fire department had to have one, and planning had to have one. Where are they now?
As we briefly discussed, I was not aware of that until yesterday afternoon.
Well, and I think this goes to, to an issue that's going to become a lot, well, this issue, I don't know that we have anybody trained now to, to run a drone, according to our fire chief, we don't. And now I know as of today, she said there's two of them up there, the one that was assigned. Two of these, because they, there were two physically had, and I said, well, I was looking, we had a property issue, and I, as you well know, I brought it to you and said, we can't, so, well, we own the property beside it, so if we put a drone in the air and look at the town property beside it, you're going to encompass a bigger area.
But don't you have to be licensed? I believe you have to have a license.
No, Steve Paquin did not have a license.
I have no idea.
I do.
I thought that you had to be licensed.
No, he worked for the town, no, they didn't have, he didn't have.
Rules and regulations have changed since drones have started, so there may have been changes from back then.
But there may be, but right now, we bought the drones, and they just sit there, and the fire chief said, she doesn't really have it, they're there, that's all, whether the batteries are charged or whether, she says, they're there. Not to their fault, because they got one, and planning got one, and he used to use it, and the guy that used it a lot.
I'm sorry to interrupt, when he was using it, the fire department and planning shared one drone. Planning did not have their own drone.
Okay, now, who did, uh, the gentleman, the conservation, I can't think of his name right every time. Rick Ball, he used it a lot. Because he'd go out and look at a property with a drone, using the specifications, because he, he trained himself in this. So we don't have Rick Ball, so now we have these machines we bought, are we going to use them? If we're not, are they worth something to somebody else? Because.
Well, if they're sitting somewhere, we might as well get rid of them.
Well, how long are you going to keep it? Everything, like everything electronic, it gets outdated, so maybe it might be.
And that might be, and that might be the case, I don't know.
Well, they're outdated because we don't have anybody to run them. We don't have a person that can get one off the ground that I know of in this town right now. Rick Ball retired, maybe you can.
I'm the last person.
I can, I can fly an airplane, but I can't fly a helicopter.
Well, the simple fix is just, if not anyone's interested, you could send them to training, but it's my understanding, and I just reached out to Jane too, she said, the fire department bought it and we just shared it. So if the fire department wants to train someone, or the police department wants to train someone, we can certainly.
But they didn't buy the one for planning.
They don't own one, there's only one.
But we have two, where'd the other one come from?
Deb says she believes it was Mike Newhalls and he must have forgot that it's here. We only own, own tick one, and after it stops getting used, out of sight, out of mind, no one knew it existed.
And to answer your question, did you do a little bit of research, you do require an FCC license for anything over? It's, other than basically what's a toy, you would require to have an FCC license.
I thought you had to, but there's.
Could we put a note in this meeting and have Mr. Paquin called and find out if he had an FCC license? Or, and do we need one now? We have these, because there's an incident just recently, we could have used one.
Karen just said that she did a little research and it was required now.
It's currently required now, I mean, in the past few years, and I, there wasn't a year that was indicated in, in the document that I had, it was a back sheet, but it simply states that you currently need an FCC license for anything.
I want to know about it, because if we're not using them and they have any value, rather than set in a closet.
Yeah, sell them, except if we don't, if we only own one.
That'd be great.
Awesome, okay, do we, um, um, so obviously we, we will, yeah, accept this.
Can I have a quick statement, real quick?
Yes, yes.
Just statement, um, just for anyone that's listening or watching, there's sixteen lines on here that are either equal or under the twenty-twenty-five default, so I'm pretty sure this is as conservative as she can get.
Of course.
I'm not, I'm not.
No, no, I'm talking about the default.
Right, but the only thing is, we can't approve this figure because we don't have the insurance information.
There's sixteen lines on here, out of twenty-six, that are either equal or under the default.
No, I think.
That's fine, it's part of the budget, at all.
The budget is good, so what we will do is, um, hold this, we'll have to bring it back up to confirm the figure once we know the final figures.
You can vote to approve as discussed, and then we can do solid numbers later.
I'll make a motion then to, um, approve this budget as discussed. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, we will move on to building inspection and CEO, I assume that might be number ten. We'll discuss zero one four two four zero one oh one to zero one four two four zero one four oh, which is basically salary.
Correct, that includes the building inspector's salary, which does reflect, um, just to kind of, a brief up that he is planning on taking the residential certification this year and the commercial next year. He's been studying it again, so that, this salary number includes if he has both.
Okay.
So that we're not kind of caught behind the eight ball, but again, he is full-time, does both building and code enforcement. And when you're looking at the line one oh two, we, we simply put a dollar in there just as a placeholder, should, in the future, that position ever be resold for any reason.
All right.
And then the other is the building, the clerk's salary, she's twenty hours a week. She kind of does all the paper processing and enters all kinds of, all the inspections and to access that type of thing letters. So, and she's a twenty-hour a week employee.
So he's going to be taking his tests on these two particular items before March, is what you're saying? The building inspector.
He'll take the residential this calendar year, and hopefully middle of the, of the twenty-five calendar year, will take the, the commercial.
Commercial, okay.
Yeah, he's just going to find the training class.
So if we get challenged right now by a commercial builder, he's not a certified building inspector?
He's a building inspector, but you carry a different certification.
Okay, well, the certification for commercial, is he cert, does it stand up in court right now?
It does, and he is also one that if he has any questions, because of his years of experience, we, he does reach out to the state of New Hampshire, their building officials as well, so he has a backup resource.
Okay.
Good, good, okay, any other questions? Okay, zero one four two four zero two oh one to zero one four two four zero nine nine nine.
Okay, kind of moving through.
Yep.
Again, their office expenses, that's kind of their, their office, the office supplies for that particular office, pens, paper, that kind of thing, ink for the printer. The building inspector telephone, that is his cell phone, he has a slightly different plan, so there's a minor decrease there, a slightly different phone. His protective clothing, currently he is fairly well outfitted, but again, next year may need some boots, and then potentially a vest or some, so we kept that line item conservative, but a good pair of boots, as you know, it's a couple hundred dollars spread out the gate.
Yep.
Again, postage, we did decrease that line item, again, using a lot of email, and we have, for the few individuals that we do get that want a paper copy mailed to them, or their building permits, we request that they include a self-addressed stamped envelope, we pop it in the mail, it does help reduce the cost, but the majority of them we do send out via email. And we do, again, legal and professional, we did keep that line item a little bit higher, as you know, we've had several code enforcement cases that have gone all the way, and we do anticipate that, unfortunately, that trend will probably be stable, you know, continue, so we, we kept that line item at fifteen thousand. The dues membership, he is a member of the Building Official Association and the International Code Council, that five hundred fifty dollars covers the, the fee, the dues associated with being a member of those associations. Professional services covers the soft goods that go with that, the updated code manuals and any ICC update bulletins that are included, that he needs for use in the field. Training and mileage, again, that is for any of his, the New Hampshire V A, the actual training seminars that are outside of his membership cost, the membership covers certain ones, and then there are additional ones that you can take in it for an additional fee, and that would be, include the fee for the, the seminars and any mileage that will be incurred, as you're looking through the next, pipe of Medicare.
Yep, that's, sure.
And then the print scan lease, there are printers that are leased in that office, which includes the printer and then the associated cartridges that go with them. There's a fair amount of printing with permits in that office. The vehicle repair and maintenance, we did, of course, it's an older vehicle, we just, we always hope for the best, but knowing that it will need a transmission flush and some general maintenance, we did estimate about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, but knowing that it will need a transmission flush and some general maintenance, uh, we did estimate about fifteen hundred dollars, looking at the current rates for some of those services. Certain things are done by the DPW, but this couple of services, just they they don't have the facilities for. Uh, fuel, again, we did estimate about nine thousand, uh, miles a year at approximately four altes a gallon, because we have no idea where that's going to go. And then again, general expenses is things, the placards and some of the test equipment that he may need. Um, I know we do have some for this year, but next year may need some some stop work or or violation of placards that we might need to order. Um, and that is pretty much that budget in a nutshell. Again, we were very conservative, um, tried to reduce and and keep line items as flat as possible.
Um, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, you must, you did a hell of a job in twenty-four, saving money. But I can see that in, and I understand that I'm only being a little bit versed in this, I see that in fifteen, under illegal expenses. And twenty-four to date, you spent just under three grand and in twenty-five, you're thinking fifteen thousand.
There are some that have, we don't, the fees haven't been built to us yet, we know we've had some recent.
No question. You answer it, you answer it, thank you.
All right, um, I'll make a motion to, um, accept this budget as discussed and, um, do I have a second?
Second it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, we will move on to the conservation commission.
I will just, I was listening about the zero percent increase.
Yes, yes, I saw that, yes.
Did a good job.
My next one's negative, pretty aggressive.
Okay, we will do, um, why don't we just do the whole thing? Zero one four six zero zero dash one oh one to zero one four six zero zero five oh six.
Well, the first, the first couple of line items are the one hour a week that.
Yep.
The cleaner salary that comes out of that budget and then four hours a week for the land use technician, comes out of that same budget.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at professional services, estimating approximately two thousand, which was a reduction, um, of the original request. The default, obviously, it's five hundred dollars more than the default, but the prior year, they had requested three. For things such as, we have some boundary surveys, um, we're not going to do, obviously, complete surveys for that amount of money, but there's a few areas of the conservation properties that we need some some corners located, um, officially. Um, so harbor services and other, uh, some other professionals that we do use, um, on the properties. There are things, the town forest gets quite a bit of use, um, and current, and Sandborn Farm, Mile Hill is the new property, obviously, Courier-Sandborn. Um, so there are some, several properties and that will include, uh, some of those professional services. Moving through FICA Medicare for time now, those are.
Yep. That portion.
Exactly, and dictated by salaries. Uh, general, general expense includes basically any and all of of their expenses for things like the, uh, New Hampshire Conservation Commission Society, the dues for that. Um, any books that they need, if a member chooses to attend a conference, if it's, if a budget is available. And then just other general operational expenses, um, some minor supplies, um, heating supplies, that type of thing. And then I know this is Sunny's favorite, the invasive species.
Yeah, I was just looking at that, I was just wondering how you kept it down to four thousand. It's usually, they want six or seven thousand dollars.
Again, trying to be very conservative, they, the Conservation Commission did, um, I believe it was in August. They did vote to use a little bit of the funding from the Conservation Fund, because they can do that, uh, for some of the invasive species management. This four thousand that the is requested is for both the aquatic and terrestrial, because again, as we all know, the invasive species are here. The ultimate intent with the commission is not necessarily to eradicate, but to at least contain.
Control, control.
Control and contain. Um, and again, there's both the Silver Lake and what is one, Watershed, they do have active programs for the aquatic invasives. And things such as milkweed and the pond weed that you, which you hear about. And then there's things, uh, we have autumn olive, the the terrestrials, the autumn olive, the glossy buckthorn that, um, we hear a lot about. Um, as well as some bittersweet and other other basics, uh, that litter in a lot of the properties and recently have really kind of.
Do we have a real problem with that, do we?
It's exploding.
It has really, and also weather we we had, has really encouraged it.
It seems that the last.
I know my personal property is near one of the conservation properties and if you ever need a tour of any invasives, come right out there, we can show you every single invasive that you can think of. Autumn olive, milea minute weed, you know, the garlic mustard, the oriental bittersweet, the, uh, multi-floral rose. Once they get in the area, unfortunately, the birds, their habitat, bird, you can see if flies over somewhere and.
So how how often do they treat this?
They typically would, a general is they would mow some of it to keep it down in the spring and usually apply. They try to, to reduce the amount of herbicide as much as possible, but to mow it and then spray the herbicide so that the plants take it in. So they would do it in the spring and again, potentially in the fall. And again, using some funds and then if need be, they would use the Conservation Commission Fund, but again, they're trying to conserve that for.
Now, when you say mow it, do you mean you have to have a diver to do this?
I know, for the, for the aquatics, they have the divers, for the terrestrials, the lands, the the ones on on solid ground.
Oh.
A flail mower or something to that effect.
Okay.
We literally, I literally today cut a, um, multi-floral rose. It had a base that was like a tree trunk. I couldn't believe it, it had, you know, it killed this old apple tree because it just took it over. And at the base, I was shocked at how, yeah.
It's really bad this year.
Oh, it does, yeah, it's been brutal.
Again, you know, we had the perfect amount of rain, the perfect amount of sun for any plant, including invasives. And that's why if they are invasive, is they take over the natives and just choke them out.
Well, we can't complain about this, because this is minus five percent.
I'm not going to complain about this.
No, you're not going to complain?
No.
So we will, I'll make a motion to move this on, um, do I have a?
I'll second it.
Second, everybody's in second, this one, all in favor?
Well, you got it minus five percent, so.
I, I would try.
You were trying, I guess.
We're definitely trying.
Good for you, good for you, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, if you want to do, I got three, so.
Yeah. Oh, Jesus. Yes, and did we vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think that there was anyone. Now we'll do town clerk, Jen.
I oppose the budget right after that.
Oh, geez, um, we'll start with zero one four one four zero one oh one.
Four one four zero, what the town, what the. Okay.
Um, first, though, before we even start this, a little overview from you.
Oh, my department?
Yeah, of course.
Um, well, we're having a great time, we decorated for Halloween.
Okay.
Yeah, the girls are doing really well, we're full-blown, um, election right now, um, lastly, I learned, well, over three weeks, and then we'll be into tax season. Um, the girls are coming along really nicely, as you'll see in my budget, I am pushing hard for a lot of training for them. Yeah, we've, I gave you the numbers, I did not write them down myself.
It's okay.
For what we have collected as far as motor vehicle and taxes, what, updated due on taxes.
That's right, a couple of weeks ago, that's all right? No problem, that's all right.
Well, yeah, no, it's it's going great, the girls are sticking around, they seem very happy and everybody works very well together, which is amazing.
And they've all had their one year or will be hitting their one years?
They will be hitting one year in November and I will be hitting one year next Wednesday, so that's fun, right? Yeah, Sam is November sixth and Devon is November twenty-third, I think, I could be off on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a year.
Yeah, I know, crazy year.
It seems longer.
Tell me about it.
And it just seems like everybody is so happy with the way that the interaction they get when they come in the office.
Great, that, I love to hear people tell us that quite often and I I think them abusively, because that, that, I mean, nobody comes to see us unless they're giving us their money, period. Period, so, or I guess to get absentee ballot, but luckily, next year, there's only one election, so that'll be.
Be easier, all right, okay. We'll start with zero one four one four zero one oh one to zero one four one four zero one seven five.
Okay, so, uh, these are, um, hold up, and he says, um, the four one four zero one four one, my intention is to promote Devon to deputy town clerk. No, I'm sorry, Sam to deputy town clerk, um, so that takes out, um, twenty, it takes out the entire line item for that, because I will have one deputy and one assistant in my office. We're not hiring another person, um, so, not sure when the dollar is there.
Probably just to keep it open.
If you ever wanted to fill it, if you had a desire, you wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
That's just to keep it open, so if two years.
So the dollar's there, hold it, and he's my owner, fill it.
That's exactly right, yeah.
So, yeah, that's, that's basically it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that? No, all right.
All right.
Um, we'll move on to zero one four one four zero two three zero, down to zero one four one four zero five oh five.
So, postage is, and of course, I didn't, um, print this sheet, but that is for all of our online transactions, um. Not tax bills, that's in my tax one, um, for our redemptions, now that's taxes as well. Yeah. I'm at a loss, I don't remember why I didn't print postage.
Do you have your, do you have your account detailed with you?
I do not have for this one, no.
Uh, that's all right, that's all right.
Oh, and you did write it in this one, so, can I have your other one?
Okay, we'll get back to that, um. Yeah, I was so.
Nice hard lift, that was pretty smooth.
I'm so sorry, I'm still joking.
You got the numbers, no, let me just make them up.
Um, I don't think I messed with that one.
Where's the account, what's he doing?
He can't find them either.
Havish.
So as far as town clerk postage.
Louis, what time's the bus leave?
It's basically for the online, um, car registrations.
So it's when you mail them out, right?
When we mail them out, yeah, and then, oh, uh, NSF, uh.
Non-sufficient checks, yeah.
Yeah, return checks, which are certified, those have to go out.
Anything we mail out, anything that we send to local service and stuff.
Basic mail, yeah.
Yes, so, that's postage. We're flexible on that line.
Not experienced in this here.
Contracts, contracts is my traditional contract.
Kind of my first time doing this, go easy.
Yeah.
Well, I think we threw her into it last year after being here for two weeks.
Yeah.
It was, it wasn't even, I think it was two weeks.
It was easier, it was easier.
And I was like, okay, tell me what we do, um, so I do, I honestly went and printed my other two accounts, so. Service contracts is for my Toshiba, um, it's split with my, um, tax collector and that I have, um, we have a a new contract with them and I have the backup for that, if you would like to.
And that's decreased.
It incre, oh, yes.
Oh, wow, surprise.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, Alicia helped me work a deal on that, yes.
All right.
Um, computer is interware, which of course increased, uh, their estimate's fifty-two hundred, so that's what I'm asking for.
Now, that is also, is is that connected with this, that has to do with the state doing all of your.
Interware is where we do all of our, yeah, uh, car registrations, point of sale, all of that, it's through them.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they're great support, honestly, they're right on it.
All right.
So that's amazing. Printing.
So that's that printer that's right there by the door, right?
The Toshiba is, that's the, uh, two four.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, let's see, uh, TC notices and advertising is for the KNC filing, um. If we ever lose a job, which we never have to.
Hopefully, we don't have to again.
I know, I've known for a long time, so that is that line, conferences and dues. Uh, actually, this one, it shows the spend, but I am attending the town clerk conference this week and that's going to add another seven hundred dollars, so I increased that one and I'm, um. And training and mileage, um, so that's obviously for mileage, and then there are three, um. I thought, a bunch of information on, there's, um, two workshops, there is the conference, there is, um, the certification, which the girls couldn't do this year, because you have to have worked in the office for a year coming up next month. So that's a combination, that's for the training and mileage, is to cover all of that, because I really, I just really wanted to feel like.
Well, they should be certified.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and obviously, training wise, I'm sure, um, I'm sure when you're dealing with registrations and all that stuff with the state, that that changes.
Um, and you got to stand on top of that, I mean. And that's all the information you get at these workshops and conferences.
Sure, that's what I figured the workshop was, okay, all right.
Uh, equipment repair and maintenance, that would be for like our printers that we print the registrations on, um, we don't pay for the toner for our copier, but toner for that. Um, I had to get a new validator for, you know, things like keyboards, that type of thing.
Now, does the state require a certain type printer, or is that just, when you print your registrations, how does that?
So they used to provide the printers, they stopped doing that, so we had to buy them, obviously compatible ones, um, we have B two Ps.
Woods, okay.
Yes, and that was all bought, um, when Cynthia was in the office, so she dealt with all that. But we actually just had to replace that this year, um, and that was like eight hundred dollars, so that was, that was terrible. So that's what that's for, and then, you know, FICA Medicare employee, and then supplies is, so we pay for, you know, like our dog tags that we have to give out.
Yep. Beach stickers?
Beach stickers comes out of this.
I think the beach is out of, I actually think it's in the beach line, um, parks and.
All right, not, it's, it's the little things, yeah.
Yes, yep, and then obviously, you know, like, we need register tape and counting machine tape and folders and files and all those types of things, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And that's my budget.
And you have a reduction of thirteen percent.
She's under their twenty, she's in line with her twenty twenty-four default and under her twenty twenty-five default, so.
Yes.
It's very hard to pick at this one.
Yeah.
And the biggest thing was that was, if you have recalled back, we, um, we're going to share a person between my office and her office.
Yes. Right. Yeah.
Once we hit a default and that wasn't in the budget, we cut it and then do some movement with the finance office, with, um, hiring a full-time finance clerk and Steve being here. It kind of just worked itself out that we both felt we didn't need the extra coverage anymore, so.
Yeah.
That is why you see such a decrease, but still, like, um, Travis said, it's still even further requested, um, and.
Under twenty twenty-five default.
It's actually because I'm awesome.
There you go, see, there you go. Um, seeing that you're so awesome, I'll make the motion that we, uh, move this budget on as discussed.
I'll second it.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition?
Gentlemen, my point of view, because you had to replace somebody who was there for many years. And when COVID hit, she was the only person in this, in this town hall who worked all on, the whole time. You've done a tremendous job, because they basically forgot that she was here, they look to you, the community looks to you. Which is a hard transition to make, when you, where's Cynthia, right, where?
Right.
You're going to make a job.
Thank you, thank you very much, you've been working really hard, I appreciate it.
Because the complaints come, you go get your haircut.
Okay, election and registrations.
So this one is blown out of the water this year, because if it falls, we're one election, we have four, um, but next year's also an election.
We have, we have. Okay.
We kept everything pretty much the same.
Oh, sorry, it's number thirteen.
No, it's okay.
Oh, okay, and we're going to look at.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have to open it.
And, okay, that's okay. Um, zero one four one four one dash one oh one to zero one four one four one nine nine nine.
Um, as far as the moderators and the supervisors and the ballot clerks, I believe they put a warrant article if they were to raise, if that correct, or they come to you and ask for one, I don't remember.
Warrant.
I think it's a warrant article, you're exactly right, it goes to the voters, right, yeah, because they're, 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 well, she's elected and then, yeah.
They're all elected, except the ballot clerks are.
Are, yeah.
I didn't do it last time.
The only, I think only elected officials have to go to the voters, I think we deal with everything that's not elected.
So we deal with the ballot clerks?
The moderator, the moderators and the supervisors. The, the moderator, the moderators and the supervisors, if they wanna raise, they have to go to the public and put it on the warrant.
Right, I believe.
When COVID happened, before COVID, the ballot clerks were making eight fifty an hour, and then when COVID came because of all the added stress and stuff like that.
That's my belief also.
You guys bumped it up to twelve.
Twelve, twelve.
Aren't we generous?
So the ballot clerks give pay twelve dollars an hour.
That's correct.
And I just can't believe even the moderator, moderator only gets ninety dollars to be there for a whole day.
Ninety for one session, yeah.
Look, he's gone half today. We sit there all day, he's only gone half, he's gone half the day, you guys gonna be here, I gotta go.
Don't pick on Al. We are, listen. We are very fortunate that we have him, that's for sure.
He is a gem and, yes, and he's funny too, if you can get past like, you know, the tie and the sauce.
Yes, yep, that is for sure.
Um, yes, and then printing, this is what our town ballot printing comes out of, um. Next year, who knows how long that's gonna be, hopefully it's three pages, but um. I bumped that up a little because I feel like the next town election is going to be pretty important to everybody and there's gonna be hopefully more voter turnout, so we need more ballots and so on and so forth.
We, we, it's too bad we couldn't have used the ones that didn't get used this past year.
Oh, just a side note, the postage for.
For absentee ballots.
Yes, for the clerk, thank you, let's just, use the vehicle, um, great.
Yep.
Uh, election notices and ads, I believe the um supervisors, when they have to have meetings, they use that, um, we put our candidacy in there. Now we're gonna have to start posting when we do our ballot testing and um.
Really?
I would, I'd, I'd make a recommendation.
Yeah. Ballot testing on public and everyone, um, there's a lot. Um, increase which one?
Uh, the notices, I, I think it's important, especially this year with the presidential coming up and the. Not only our own, but with his president, that under your notices and ads, you've done such a great job keeping this down, but I think you should put a few more dollars in there. To make sure that people know that we have. I, I didn't realize how many people read the Tilton newspaper that live in Belmont.
Like the Wintersquam Echo?
That's it, they, that, you go into a household, that's in the household.
Well, I think the difference is, is that the Wintersquam apple, echo gets mailed to houses.
That's right, but it also has Belmont sports.
Yeah. Yes, it does, yeah.
And I can't, and so I would suggest that maybe that line get increased, although you've done a great job, I'm not, I'm saving money.
Yes.
But only because to put something in there when it's election time, just a, a blurb, I mean, you don't have to have a one-page ad. But I would suggest that you put a couple hundred dollars in that, cause I think their ads are, when I did used to work for a living, they were very easy to advertise with and very inexpensive.
Okay.
So you're suggesting it in the sun and the echo?
Yes, because it's surprising, if you go to the post office, you'll see the penny saver in the garbage and the echo, that they put some out there, cause I'll leave, I'll leave a few on the counter, they're gone.
Okay.
Would you like to propose we add two hundred, three hundred?
I think three hundred dollars, I, I just, and if you don't use it, then you don't use it, but I think that's. You'd be surprised how many people say, I didn't know, now that's, I realize that it's an excuse, but still, it's one of those.
I was gonna say, we will still say that.
I didn't know.
But they also didn't call, you know, come in or.
No, yeah. My birthday was not on the twenty ninth, it was really the thirty first.
Yeah.
And here, and here we sit having our evening meeting that everybody ragged on us on Facebook for, and here we sit.
And no one on the Zoom too, by the way.
Huh?
And no one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom, so they could be sitting.
Actually, I take that back, there are two other people.
There we go.
Christina and Sue are joining us.
Um, meals, God, see you later, bye, I'll be only, one election next year, so I've kept it down to a little over a hundred dollars per election with the food for dinner, whatever, cause, oh, and the school provides lunch.
Steak and fries.
Um. Steak and fries? I was thinking of doing like a potluck for this one, so you bring your grill.
Not for a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but everybody.
You know, we could probably sell some, they could make some money.
Something.
We could do some pot dogs and hamburgers.
Yeah, you know, me, um, that grill will travel.
No, certainly, no, I'm just kidding, everything will just, um, yeah.
Obviously, the Medicare is, and VICA, um, election supplies?
Uh, that is chip coding and shipping in our manual ma- maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
How about your booths, do you have to spend money on those this year?
That's a different one.
No, we don't, and we have a diff, we have a capital reserve fund for that, along with our um voting machine, which we're only having to pay half.
Okay. I know the lady that came.
So, this, this particular chip coding is on our existing voting machine, not on the new voting machine that we have to go to, correct?
Correct, and this.
So we're using our existing voting machine for the elections this year.
For, for the next one, and we're hoping to have the new one, but it's going to be still, it's the same company, so it's still gonna need to be coded, but it will not be, I think I've got Sid driving, so this big check.
So we're using the old one for next year's town election as well?
What's that?
Are we using the old voting machine for next year's town election or a new?
We are going to try to implement the new one as, that's like our test run, because it's a lesser, complicated election sadly, and you know, it's a little more manageable.
We knew that at school.
Got it.
But we blew that out because we're on a court election this year, and um usually it's just one.
Go ahead, do that small.
Every election needs a new chip.
Correct.
Yeah, you have to, you have to redo it for every election, yeah, nothing we can do about it.
Correct. And their shipping prices are off the charts, I mean, it's ridiculous.
To ship the chip.
To ship everything, you order, you order like little ink ribbons for the machine and stuff, the ink ribbons cost like two hundred and sixty cents.
That almost sounds like a.
So you order as much as you can, right?
Right.
And then they, they do charge you to ship the chips as well, that is hard to say, so you try to get it all in at once, but they're gonna be sending them back. Because it's like forty-three dollars as a minimum shipping fee, and I'm like, it weighs two ounces, what is going on here, so, yeah, but I asked him about it, I'm like, yeah, I don't know, so. We do, and then supervisor expense, I have nothing to do with that, um.
I, I got it covered, Jen, on three oh one, the uh meals, we got it. This line covers the meals for the election workers, they didn't say what we could eat, they didn't say how much you could spend.
Are we asking you?
Items may fluctuate year to year, for example, this year we had four elections, we're buying meals for, other years we have three elections, and some only one election.
Right.
Get the grills, we can make a few bucks here.
And then we'll have like a, a income line, a revenue line on here too.
No, we ain't gonna have no income, it's gonna be a loss. I've learned a little bit in twenty years.
So.
So this is roughly minus forty-nine percent, obviously, we added a couple hundred dollars to it, um, but, um.
It's still, it didn't change it, oh, hold on, um, so that forty percent is only goes on for requested, so I don't change for requested, so yours will reflect, but it's probably.
Alright, um, I'll make a motion to um move this forward, one second, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, tax collector and fin-
Yeah, I think, why are you leaving our agenda?
I'm kinda, I'm kinda confused. I'm like, where are you going?
You better, you're not gonna get the free lunch.
I think combined budget.
Be, be gentle, please, please.
Okay, this is tax collector and finance, um, are we gonna do an overview or we're just gonna start right in here?
Yes.
I mean, I could do, I guess, a quick overview of the finance department, I took over in the middle of February, uh, to the end of February. And at that time, uh, I was kinda by myself, a lot of volume in that place, so we always knew we needed some assistance, um, so we did hire Crystal Jacobs. She started with us in the beginning of uh June, um, I think she'd been a godsend, I think she's super smart, nice to work with. And I think has been a tremendous asset to this town, really, anywhere she would work, she'd be a tremendous asset, so I think we're lucky to have her. She seems very happy here, I think she likes the uh, the work environment with everybody, and so I think we're, we're blessed to have her, so.
Awesome.
And you also, she's, she helps me out in the administrative department, she helps Colleen out in the assessing department when she's needed, so, and she never says no, and she always jumps right in, dives right in, I don't, none of those.
And your personalities work well, and that means a lot to the public, all of you, in that office when they see smiles versus, what do you want?
Yeah, right, right.
What do you want?
And I do think, you know, I.
Because I think, what do you want when you leave?
That's like Steven, Steven says that to me.
Started part time, twenty twenty-three, I, I was seeing, you know, a lot of turnover at that point, and then, you know, at some point it just shifted, and I think the overall tone has been amazing.
Yeah, you guys.
And I can see every department, really, everyone kinda comes through me, I mean, more Alicia than, you know, through me as well, and um, it's not only does everyone work extremely hard. But again, I think they do care about the town, and I enjoy interacting with them for the most part.
Well, and I think the other thing is, is when you see that reduction in the um turnover, that it's working, you know, if there was still a lot of turnover, there's something that's not, you know, jibing. But obviously, that is pretty well.
Yeah, I think it's.
I will say, the whole of town hall works together so well, like, there's nothing that anyone can ask of my department that I'm not willing to help out with, or any other, you know, vice versa, like.
Huge, and that's how it's supposed to be.
It is a good work environment, it's very, I don't need to go to work, it's, it's good, yeah.
That's a good way, we always, that was always, if you get up in the morning and you're not looking forward to going to work, it's not working for you, it's time, yeah.
Correct, yes, and we spend so much time with, I mean, we spend more time with our families, so.
Yeah, yeah. Of course.
Do you want to talk to you upon Joanne to be able to talk to you about stuff?
Yep, so we, we've also, um, it's pretty close, three months now, and I got a consultant to assist me further, um, in my education with, with the position.
Yep. Yep.
She's been excellent, she's, she comes in once a week, um, and super nice to work with, excellent to work with, she's cleaned up a lot of stuff, um, for me in the past, and. So that has also been a valuable add.
And I was gonna say, and, and obviously, it's helping you, I know it helped you with the um software, correct?
Well, the software, very familiar with, but, um.
The audit.
The audit, right, yeah, yeah.
With the audit, you know, she has decades of experience, um, so it was my first audit.
Yeah. Yeah, which can be.
Yeah, and, and this is coming twenty twenty-three, right, uh, so she came in and, and again, without her help, you know, probably wouldn't even be able to get through it with her help, it's been excellent, and then. She'll be with us a little while longer and just getting the processes tight.
Okay, um, question, I know the auditors were in, and is that complete?
Yeah.
So they collect all their stuff, they were here basically five days a week last week till five o'clock every night, um, so they do all the work all in, and then they have to finish it up.
Yeah.
I did have good conversations with them, they said, you know, having Joanne help us get to a cl- a point where they were okay with, helped immensely, and would have been in a far worse situation.
Sure. Yeah.
Um, but, you know, we are all, we were all available, um, my personal conversation with the auditor was, you're okay, I mean, and I expect.
They'll come back, they'll come back with their list of things.
Yeah, I expect some of the deficiencies, and we talked about them, and he knows it, and his, his suggestion was that we just do a management letter saying, you know, we did have turnover, we did hire a finance consultant to help us. We know we, you know, were slacking in this, this, and this, but we now have a process in place to fix this, this, and this, um.
And there were, there were two finance directors last year, right?
Right, oh, I know, I know, that's the.
So there's kind of two different answers in it, and.
Yep, and everybody has their own way of doing.
They do, and even the auditors, right, but the auditors are good, they're not trying to change the way we do business overall, but they're smart enough to know um better ways of doing it, um, so they're helpful.
Yep, they do.
They're always gonna find deficiencies, as long as you don't have to say one year after year, then that's the, that's the good thing. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. They're dumb to find deficiencies.
Where'd you park the Ferrari?
But that's why, that's, that's why we, that's why towns have audits.
Yeah, it's valuable, yeah.
I mean, it's ju, you have to, as much as we.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're looking for the deficient, and they're looking for, obviously, their biggest thing is fraud, they're looking to make sure that Steve isn't, you know, cutting himself checks and, you know, we're not.
Yeah. Or he doesn't have the Ferrari in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
The board, and you know, and then, yeah, they ask questions, and as long as you have an explanation and an answer that makes sense to them and I, they're like, okay, moving on.
Yeah, yeah, alright, awesome.
Still paying.
Yeah, it is, it's not, it's, I find it stressful.
Come at you.
Yeah.
Minnesota, it's a horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're, it's, you almost, you lose your common sense when you're there, like all the stuff you do on a regular basis now, they ask you a question, may frame it differently, and you're like, you have to know what they.
You almost second guess yourself, oh, yeah.
Oh, all day long, all day long, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's not easy, alright, okay, let's start with zero one four one five oh one oh one, and we'll go down to zero one four one five oh one seven five.
Okay.
I guess part of, not a lot of problem, but needs a mix.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And the salary, so.
And obviously, the, the decrease is because of the change.
Yeah, the de- yeah, the decrease was um because of the change from the original director to myself.
Yes. Finance clerk.
Yeah.
And my hours, although haven't been reduced, would be slightly reduced from what they were working.
Yeah.
And that's the reason for the change, so that saves, you know, a, a good amount of money.
Okay.
I could jump to my.
Yeah, go ahead.
Finance clerk, um, I think her wages, you know, more than perfect for her, what she's been, what she's been doing, um.
If I might just pause you there, the reason why you may see um the increase to hers is because, um.
Which one is hers, the four two, one four two?
One, one forty.
One forty, okay, one forty, got it.
One forty.
The increase is essentially the default, which was twenty-three, which was, I think at that point, part of her salary.
It led from my.
And it was him at that.
It was my salary.
Oh, that's right, cause you were part-time and then what, right, got it.
I was extremely part-time, I was, I was twenty hours, you know, and that ran.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right, you were twenty hours back then.
So I went higher at a lower rate.
Yeah.
A lower hours, lower rate.
Okay.
And then when we, with your blessings, we moved that to a full-time position.
Sure, yeah.
That's why there's such an increase, she didn't get a thirteen thousand dollars.
No, no, okay, it's just a shift, a shift.
No.
As far as I go, it's a polarize, um, and then the same situation with the town clerk side where I'll be naming um Devon the uh deputy.
Deputy, yeah.
And then having just one assistant, so we have that single bin um line there.
That one dollar.
Is it Devon or Sam, cause you now gave us two, last time you said Devon, then you said Sam, and now you just said Devon.
Well, okay.
So now I'm confused.
So town clerks have to live in the town, at least serve, including the deputies, so that's Sam, and Devon lives in Franklin, so she can do the, the tax collecting.
Yeah. Okay, so it's two, okay, they're two, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Two people, but they're both shared.
No, 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 I knew that, but you said, so who's your, your deputy?
I would have two, I would have Sam as a clerk and Devon as a tax collector.
Okay, now I see the difference there, so lost for a second.
Yes.
Cause you have to live in town to be one, or you don't have to live in town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or the deputy town clerk, and Sarah does, so.
Okay, I hear that's two separate.
Just to make sure you're on your toes.
Yeah, well, typically in the past, we had always been like, Devon was the deputy town clerk and tax collector, uh, I don't know, was it a year or two ago?
Right.
Yeah.
When Cynthia was the town clerk tax collector, we had proposed splitting the position because of a lack of qualified applicants out there who, because of the RSA, you have to be a resident. It's very hard to find someone who has the experience.
Which is so antiquated.
I know, I know.
And the residency, so she had suggested that we split the position so that.
And that was on the ballot.
It was, and it was approved, and, and in this instance, it works out perfect because Sam is not, I mean, Sam is a resident and Devon is not, so we can split those two duties and get them, you know, kind of a, a half title, you know, third, the deputy for this and that.
I forgot we split them.
Yes, because they are very even, equal, they both started the same month, they're.
So they're half and half.
Yeah, exactly, it's just the fairest, and neither one of them overshines the other, so they are to agree.
Yeah.
And it gives, and by splitting it, had given her the flexibility, you know, you know, but if she loses them again, she can make it one more person if she found an applicant who was a resident and she chooses to, you know.
So that's why you left the line in with the dollar?
Yes.
No?
No.
Well, that's the.
No, that's why we're splitting the deputy town clerk tax line between two people, so just one, yeah.
Okay, alright, okay.
Alright. Uh, OT is shared, um.
We re- we really don't hit that line, um, ever, I don't.
Yeah.
For finance, they don't, they would maybe now, during budget season where um Steve's working, you know, to go to these meetings and the budget planning meetings, and Colleen and Crystal had done some overtime to get the books prepared.
Mm-hmm.
And he may have to have some overtime to get the budget planning books, but for the most part, not a lot of the time.
Line.
And obviously, the treasurer is elected.
Yes.
We can speak about the treasurer. Um, I'm always in contact with her, so gee. God bless her, works real hard. Um, you know, I think our communication is, is good. We get the job done, we get the checks out, and I don't think we've ever had any issues, so, um, that's working very well.
Okay.
And she drives a big truck.
She does. Yeah, you need a, you need a, you need a ladder to get into it.
I don't want her gas bill, so.
No, that's for sure. Okay, um, let's move on to zero one four one five oh two oh eight and to zero one four one five zero nine nine nine.
So I don't really, I mean, say over the budget committee.
That's, um, all the stuff we use for the printing of the books, any, if we have to get new binders, any new tools. So that's just to replace any of the budget committee costs associated with that.
So as far as four one five zero two three zero tax collector postage and four one five zero two six zero tax collector printing.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, the, um, costs have been put consistently in the wrong line item. So that's where the difference from eighty-five hundred down to four thousand for the postage.
All right, and then you added it back in, got it, okay.
Uh, and then the printing, we put up to eighty-five hundred. Um, our postage is for, okay, that's for everything, the tax bills, water sewer, which we split the water sewer as well. Um, any, you know, lien notices, deed notices, all of that, um, postage. Yeah, I'm real up on that postage. Um, but that's that line.
And we did give notification that the certifies are increasing to nine dollars and change, and then the mega postage is going to, what was it? Yeah.
Seventy, it already is like nine sixty-four.
Oh, that's not a E certified.
No, I mean, a certified. Yeah, we have used the card.
And then the regular daily mail is going.
It's like suddenly, suddenly, suddenly.
Right now.
Certainly, USPS won't be in negatives.
Imagine to mail, to mail a car. I do, I can't, but yeah.
Um, the next line, service contracts, that's the other half of my Toshiba, my printer, my office. Um, computer is B M S I, which is our tax collecting and counting.
Yeah, it's fine.
That's the software.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which most towns use that, correct? B M S I?
Uh, no.
No, no.
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 It's, so B M S I's changed, changing, but you have a different, it's still B M S I.
We do different aspects of the, the same software.
So B M S I was purchased by G Works. Um, so they're still supporting our software. It's kind of an older software. Uh, yes, a lot, a lot of municipalities, they use it. But I think now, a lot of municipalities kind of have to look at other software now that they've been purchased. So at some point, we'll have to do that. It's not this year, but.
In my community, everybody loves Avatar for taxes, for registrations, it does it all. And I'll just throw that out there.
How much does it change over?
I, wouldn't you get to tell you, cause I haven't bothered looking at anything like that because of our current situation and, you know, the prospects of us.
Wouldn't you have to change Avatar and Horizon Vision? Do they work hand to hand?
I mean, I don't point, it's gonna be good, but it seems to me, with the computer world and not being illiterate at all with it, all I can understand is the expense. The sooner we do it, the cheaper it's gonna be, because every year they add another.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is it's so complex, right? Her, she has so much data going through her, but so much data going through mine, um, you don't.
But you're paying, you're paying that now, but are you getting, if B M S I, and I only stand it from hearsay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is falling behind.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they could, yes. Um, you know, there's two concerns. One.
It's gonna be a lot of work.
It's definitely, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Cause I go to some of these conferences and people are in the middle of changing or.
They hate it.
Oh, okay.
And it's, and so now you stop considering problems, whether they stay with B M S I, G Works, or they're going with other people. You're always being overpromised and kind of.
Does B M S I see this? I mean, are they just lovely gagging because they can hang on and?
They're trying to get us to go to G Works, but we are waiting to see everyone else who gets on the board, bandwagon and work out the kinks essentially before we hop on, because it is stressful, and you know, when we, we did move.
And they go down quite often.
I don't know.
Oh, you that, you shut the thing off at home.
I mean, again, it's not the greatest software. There are, there are definitely programs that are better. Last April of twenty-three, we had, um, kind of the finance aspect of the, the software and the payroll. So it's kind of like two, two things. They did update their payroll, and I know Belmont was one of the last to do it, and that was smart. So everyone else can have their own problems. And so when we moved into that, it was like my first month, uh, here, it was pretty good. It's still pretty good. So that minor update to their payroll is ninety-eight compared to the finance aspect of it. But again, now it's G Works and, and we've done one kind of demo with them and discussed it, but this is a pro, it's a long process. I would never really jump ahead too quickly with it. And one, we should speak to them, but also speak to. Let's see, let's see of the software.
You have the people that have to work.
You know, part of it too, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
We felt we're, we're trying to get back on our feet with the default. We didn't wanna move with, and I know it's gonna be very expensive too, because not only do you have your town clerk tax collector side, but you also have your finance side, which they kind of have to mesh too. So you're buying multiple softwares.
And I don't, actually don't even know, I don't even think G Works has a tax side, and that's another problem.
So then you end up, if you, you don't wanna end up with.
Two battling companies.
Two, two, yeah, I mean, on the.
And I do know that Avatar reporting goes right over, so that's not cool, but food for thought, yeah, but.
So in other words, you're, you're, um, how do we say it? You're investigating it, you're watching it, you're contemplating it. It's something that's gonna have to happen, but.
At some point we have, yeah, at some point we have.
Yeah, I, I went to the tax collector conference last month, and I'm going to the town clerk this month, and they have all the vendors out there and all the information.
Really?
Yes.
Yep. So you're getting, you're, when you go to these, you're walking away with someone's card, you're getting what you.
And, and information, the brochures, whatever you wanna call it.
Yes.
And I think we're all part of the listserv, um, where people will throw up, they're like, hey, looking for a new software for this? What's your experience? What's your content? What are your rates? And so we have other people who are kind of like teaming, like, what do they do?
That's a hard one.
It's very difficult, and you probably would better be a little late than early.
Yep.
And.
Let everybody else.
So, you know.
Yeah. Years ago, we changed software. I can't remember that, it was brutal.
And once you do it.
Yeah, 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 you're stuck with it. You're exactly right, cause you've paid, yeah.
Yes.
Now let other people, yeah, okay.
Work out the case.
There you go.
Right.
Okay, I forget where we were.
Um, we are at two sixty, which is the, uh, tax collector printing, which is the, um, the tax bills. Yes, and warrants, or those, which we share.
Leans, deeds, got it.
Um, the registry of deeds, I asked for an increase on that just because we are collecting a, help load taxes and redeem loans. So they charged us her lien to do that, so that's exciting. Um, title search, I, there is a substantial increase there. Um, the person that used to be used, Jane Sanders, I find her mediocre. She stresses me out, she does poor work. She's not accessible. She's always stressed out, on the edge. And so I did some looking around. Um, I happened to go to the conference last year when it first started, and newfound title company was brought to my attention. Several towns in the area do use them. Um, so give them a shot, they're incredible. Their notices go out in forty-five days as compared to sixty, which is now the time allotment. They give you this beautiful bound book, they send all the letters out, all the greeting cards. It's, they're just amazing. They do everything. Um, I did sign the contract with them before we went into a default budget, which is flying over on that budget for that. Um, but I can't speak highly enough about them. It's great, and it takes so much pressure off of my office, especially with the new girls and so on and so forth, that I asked for that increase for that better product. Cause we do that for leans and for the deed process as well.
And we gotta be correct.
Absolutely, yes.
Got to be correct.
One will slip up and then you're back to square one.
You're exactly right.
That's correct.
Yep, that is for sure.
Two ninety and two ninety-five a year.
Yes, consistent dues.
Yep.
And training and mileage is just the other half, my portion of it is the other half of what I presented to you for.
Basically for five people.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, tax collector equipment, go up to five hundred, um. Equipment in my office. Um, finally, comments, we have to store a lot of records forever. So that needs stuff to store in. Um, and then tax collector repair maintenance is for, I use this one for, um, we use a lot of stamps. I know it sounds silly, but stamping is my life. Um, so stamps, stamp pads, replacements, uh, that type of thing is for that work there and maintenance. Uh, and then after that is the.
FICO, yeah, yeah.
Returnment.
F A audit, that's the audit that we just, yeah.
I actually have an, an increase on that, if I may. Um, I just spoke to our auditor today. I need to increase that line, um, because so much, because of how much extra work was put into the twenty-three audit, um. I'm gonna go over that budget, but he's willing to hold off on that final invoice until twenty-five, um, for that. So I need to increase that line to thirty-seven thousand.
What, what's the line number?
But understanding that portion of that truly is, um, four on line, four oh one, thirty-one, or four from bottom.
That's enough.
Um, and also.
What did you, not somebody up?
That audit is shared with, um, we split the total fee between the library and the water and sewer departments. And we may also come close to a federal audit in, um, twenty-five, um, which is a whole separate audit, where if we spend more than five hundred thousand of federal funds, which we may be, cause A, we have the state grant, the cops grant, COSEF grant, and one other one, and plus the five hundred thousand of the C D B G is federal funds.
Yep.
Um, so that will, most likely, they're anticipating spending that for twenty-five, will put us over. They will pay for a portion of that federal audit if, if the audit is, um, triggered because of them, um.
So even though it's free money, it's grant money, isn't it, isn't it a joke? Even though it's a grant, we're gonna have to pay, we have to pay to have our grants audited by the feds. Yep, yeah.
And the other reason why we had already gone over budget is because when Jen took over the town clerk position, you have to basic, basically audit Cynthia at that point in time and start new with the books. So that caused another audit that we had to have for twenty-four as well.
She didn't go to jail.
And again, if we don't spend.
I haven't seen it in a while. No, I'm kidding. I'm just kidding.
Probably good.
Because if I don't spend any of that, I can encumber it, so next year we use that first. And then, um, they also do write off a lot for municipalities, so let's just say, a true audit for a business doing like work for us, maybe thirty thousand, but they only made bill us for like twenty-five thousand. So they, they lessen their billable hours to municipalities, so. And we have been, I think if you, I can pull the history, but we have been, they've never really increased our audit fee over the years, and it's always been pretty steady and.
So is what we went over this year, the field work?
Yes.
You spent a lot more time field working?
We, we did. They had to come for two weeks versus one, and we also had Cory come for one day to prep Steve and I, because this was my first solo audit as well, without having an inexperienced finance director who truly should handle ninety percent of the audit, and he had zero experience with it. So he came for a whole day and prepped us on what to expect. And again, they were here for two weeks versus one week.
Where the equal opportunity play.
And because of, they had a lot more adjustments to make.
I'm sure their wages have gone up too, right?
Oh, yeah, they're not, ain't nothing going down.
They'll lose their, their employees, so.
Yep, yep, unfortunately.
They gotta justify.
Um, tax collector supplies, they sort of change, and then.
Yeah, they, just the eight oh one line, basically what that comprises of just checks and purchase orders, so stuff we need, obviously. And just the, the line nine 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 is office supplies, paper, Adobe software that we use, so basic office supplies.
So even though this is, we're at zero, by adding this figure for, um, additional auditor expense.
It's still less than a ten percent, looks like.
Yes, it is.
And very well.
Yeah.
To the requested, yeah, so that puts us, um, at three percent for the requested and seven percent over the default.
Okay. All right, I'll move to, um, I'll make a motion to move this forward.
So I'll second.
On my favor?
All right. Good job, very good job.
Guys made me look like a liar. I still have a lot of questions. These are so tight, I'm like.
Can I cut it anymore?
Last.
Very good job.
So, and did you want, John, I know, um, you have some questions about the revenue. Um, I can give you some numbers as far as the town clerk tax collector office. In boat taxes, we collected so far to date, twenty thousand seven seventy-five.
And you said boat taxes?
Boat taxes.
Yeah, we got a razor from the state. It's so stupid.
Um, motor vehicles, I mean, motor vehicle current fees to date is one million, two hundred and thirty-two, four thirty-five, which our estimate is one point seven million, so we're hoping to breach that one point seven by the end of the year. Um, our estimate for the boat taxes, we had estimated twenty-three four, um, but I think I'm gonna leave it at the probably twenty-one thousand, where she's, or maybe even the twenty thousand seven seventy-five, or my projection is, I don't know how many people are gonna have a picture of boats we do now in January.
Um, yeah, cause boat registrations are calendar year from January first to seven thirty-first, so we won't see it more than maybe a couple.
And.
Couple of fishermen.
Yeah, ice fishermen with the boat.
Yeah, ice fishermen with their boat. Well, they want their boat in case they break through.
Yeah.
Well, I've taken, I've taken that up for the governor a few times. I've lost every time.
Boating lobby kills us. We tried it last year and they hammered us.
They're wicked.
You know, they buy all these, they have all these huge boats on the lake.
I think it costs like seventy-five dollars per.
When we had a camp, when we had.
Forty percent of one of the biggest marinas on the lake, boats that they sold, brand new, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars per boat, were sold and are registered in Guilford, New Hampshire. The boats are on, in New Hampshire. They make a deal when they sell them. You give, they use the address of the marina.
Oh, is that how they get around that? I wonder.
They give them the address that is stock.
Actually, they're not gonna be a visitor too.
No, but they register it, and they're on Lake Michigan, they're on Champlain, they're on Lake Bomazene in New York. I just couldn't.
We had a little Boston Whaler, but we kept it at our camp all the time, but we registered it in New Hampshire.
Yeah, but these boats, these boats, if, if you're a family, I don't care if you go buy a Hyundai, you're gonna pay some money to town tax, right? Then they carve that money up with the highway and they carve it up, marine safety patrol, all this money, you know, we have a lottery to help, every town's, the biggest problem in any town is the school. Every town, every city, the school funds. Yeah, we got other problems, but the schools are biggest problem. That was, they were gonna help that. And he came and talked to us one night, probably ten years ago, the devil down the street at A E Mitchell. And when I asked him that, he said, we're going, John, see you later.
What is the reason for not wanting to increase?
Lobby.
Lobby.
It's the lobby, yeah, I want the fees to go up.
A man named George Roberts, who lives right beside the school and on one forty, he's got more horsepower than, in this state, he's the head of the lobby for the marine, you know, this association.
Isn't that crazy?
Yeah.
He runs that association and he gets these guys in.
He was a senator or something.
State senator.
State senator, yeah.
Well, his father, he's, he's an heir of the fruit tree. He never worked, he had never had a real job, but he went to Dartmouth. But he flunked out, but he went to Dartmouth. Yeah, but he, he is in control.
Oh, yeah. So our next meeting for this is, is it Tuesday?
Yeah, the fifteen.
I'm going on vacation. I'm going on vacation.
Yes, cause Monday's a holiday.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a three-day weekend, so it's not having me come in.
So Tuesday, is that a night meeting?
Yes. And then Wednesday's the all-day, the all-day air.
I gotta do something, maybe I'm stupid.
You know.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Chief.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, question, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You know.
Show me those goddamn folders you got.
There is everybody, this is correct.
Show him the book, I've got all the meetings, I've got a book.
So our next one is.